I'd like to call this meeting of the Fillmore City Council to order, please. And we will begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand up. Ready to begin?
Our pledge of allegiance is the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Villa Senor?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gorilla?
Here.
Mayor Brogie?
Here.
Councilmember Austin?
Here.
Councilmember Mendez?
Here.
Thank you. And may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I motion to approve the agenda.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. So that takes us quickly into public comments. And before we start, it's interesting, we have such a full room, and I thought most people would be home watching the presidential debate. But here we are, so. What we're going to do, we have several speakers, but we do have a short agenda tonight. We have one other item on the regular agenda, so we'll stick to the three minutes for each speaker. And when you come to the podium, please give us your name. And you have the three minutes. We'll start with a green light, which you can see there from the podium. And when you get down to your last 30 seconds, it'll turn yellow, and then it'll turn red. So our first speaker tonight is Diana Martinez.
Hello, good evening. My name is Diana Martinez. I'm a senior at Fillmore High School. I'm 17 years old. And frankly, I'd prefer to be doing my college applications right now, but I'm concerned for the youth of Fillmore, so I'm here tonight. As a high school student here in Fillmore, I have personally seen the importance of AB 1955 in my own experience and in the experience of my fellow queer youth. I personally know that not every child has a home that's accepting to go back to. Especially in a town like this, where there have been many public disputes targeting the queer community. A resolution against AB 1955 is just another clear example that there is a good portion of the Fillmore population who do not accept anyone who doesn't identify as heterosexual or cisgendered. In the more unfortunate extreme cases, there are some in this town who would even risk the well-being of their own children if they knew about their child's queer identity. Whether by casting them out, neglecting them, or subjecting them to direct physical violence. Never ever should this be the case. Having safe spaces available on campus for students to express and feel safe to speak of their own identities, especially if they're LGBTQIA+, is so vital and important. If they don't have these safe spaces in their own home, or have reason to believe that they'll be rejected by their own families, they may find one at school. Revoking that by stripping students from their ability to express their developing understanding of their own gender identity in safe school spaces will make many students feel more alone than ever. This feeling of loneliness, of having nowhere that you feel like you are accepted to be yourself, perpetuates the skyrocketing mental health crisis rates for queer children. The city council should always keep the safety of Fillmore residents as its first and foremost priority. Especially when there are minors involved. The bill AB 1955's purpose is to ensure that queer children in California are not outed to their parents or guardians whom they aren't ready to express their identities to, or for those who don't even feel safe enough to express themselves. Repelling that is an act of hate against queer youth in Fillmore. If the city forces educators to out students to their families, those children will be put in danger. No child should ever be put in danger by educators and professionals hired by our schools that they turn to for help and assistance. A resolution against the bill AB 1955 does that exactly. Now more than ever, safe spaces for queer children must be protected, not stripped from them. As a current student in this district, I call on the Fillmore City Council to protect students to express their identities in school without fearing for their safety and well-being. I hope that you, as Fillmore City Council members, realize the gravity of your actions. If you continue to support bill AB 1955, you're maintaining the safety for children in Fillmore. Actions otherwise should be condemned and will harm instead of help LGBTQI students. Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, next, Gary Cushing, please. Gary Cushing?
Good evening, Mayor Brogie and councilmembers. I am Gary Cushing. My wife and I have eight great kids and 16 beautiful grandchildren. I'm here tonight to comment on AB 1955. A law that was passed claims it was passed to help our children. This could be farther from the truth. The state is getting involved with the rights of the parents to protect and raise their children to become functioning members of our society. A teacher has a student, usually one year, maybe nine months, maybe one hour a day. And the parents have their children for life. I believe parents have the right to know anything and everything about their children. How else can they do their duty to their family, provide a healthy environment? I urge you to recommend that a resolution be sent to the state and to our elected officials, letting them know that we do not agree with this intrusion into our families. I also encourage everyone here tonight to join the coalition to overturn AB 1955. The resolution from Fillmore will show that the citizens of Fillmore do not agree with AB 1955. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Ken Costellanos, followed by Joey. I'm sorry, is there a Joey in the house? Okay, so you're next up.
How you doing? My name's Ken, and I'm a pastor of the community. And I'm here to talk about AB 1955. And just wanted to say that this isn't a left or a right thing, and this isn't a LGBTQ or a straight thing. I have family members that are LGBTQ that I love very much. This is about the parents and their kids. And parents having the right to know exactly what is going on in their kids, whether it be straight parents or LGBTQ parents. It is not the place of the government of California to allow schools to keep secrets from parents. This is an abuse to the parents and the kids. It is the obligation of the teachers and the school board to let the parents know what is going on with their kids. It is an obligation of the city council to let this parental abuse and child abuse not happen in Fillmore. This cannot happen here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Joey, followed by Alan King.
Hello. Hello. Mayor Brogie, members of the city council. My name is Joey Uhaszakumsky. I live in Fillmore. I'm helping to raise two kids. But I'll start with some good news. I was in a meeting with VCTC this afternoon, and they said that the bus line from Fillmore to Moore Park is now the second most popular line on the Valley Express. So in less than a month, it's a success. And I wish that's all I had to say, but I'm a little conflicted because whenever this, whenever a pride proclamation comes up, most of the city council says, "No, we don't want to hear about that. Stay in the closet. We don't want to celebrate it." Now it's, "Oh, we've got to tell everybody. We've got to tell the parents when this is going on." So do you, I'm, whether you're just, it's just so conflicted. Whether you're just homophobic, or you just want to be belligerent with the state of California because you don't like their policies, this is not doing anything to protect children, and it's a waste of time. It's a waste of time, and it's a waste of Fillmore's money. And if you want to do stuff to protect children, or give them an enriching time in Fillmore, you can do things like make it safe for them to walk or bike to school. You can, the pool's a fucking mess. You can make the pool something that they can use in the summertime. It's getting hotter and hotter every year. You're not doing anything to help kids stay cool. There's no shade structure over playgrounds. There's no lights at Two Rivers Park. In the winter, they can't go out and play at the park. And there's no pride proclamation. That would be something that would be to protect kids. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Alan King, followed by Yvonne Becerra.
Good afternoon. My name is Alan King. I was born and raised here in Fillmore. I would like to read a statement from my kid's wife. Hi, my name is Kai Krupa. I apologize for not being in attendance. I'm a Fillmore resident and therapist, and specializing in working with teens and traditional aged youth. Transitional age, excuse me. I see people from many mental health concerns, and have had the privilege of working with a lot of LGBTQ plus identified people. I've seen how they thrive with support and love and safety, and I've seen the reverse. When youth are not supported by their community and loved ones, the possibility of severe mental health crises drastically rise. In my work, I am trained to consider the mental and emotional effects, as well as the effects of systemic oppression and policy changes. Mentally and emotionally, this could have devastating effects on our community. Youth thrive in safe environments where their needs are being met. Forcing a safe person or a teacher to out youth does not promote this. It is an impossible task for teachers, or ask for teachers. Anyone who works with youth on a professional level is a mandated reporter. If teachers were to out a student to unaccepting parents, they could be putting a child in danger, which is illegal. In essence, you're asking a teacher to put a child in danger, which would also lead to a mandated report, which could then lead to the youth being removed from their home. I can professionally state that it is not in the best interest of teachers and our community to force anyone to come out to their parents. In closing, I ask you to consider these systemic questions. If Fillmore continues to focus their efforts on the LGBTQ plus group, do we have the community and financial resources to support houseless youth and parents who lose access to their kids? Do we have the financial and energetic resources to battle a state lawsuit? I think not. Thank you.
Thank you. So next we have Yvonne Becerra, followed by Lynn Edmonds, who will be giving her time to Cynthia King. So Cynthia King is next.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. I am Yvonne Becerra. And this is a little change from what we are hearing right now this evening. I'm actually here to talk about your community library. Okay? All right, I'm glad to hear, happy to hear that. Hi, Albert. Yes, Albert and I did some Storytime this last May, so it's good to see you again, and I welcome all of you to come to Storytime. I am branch manager at the Fillmore Library, 502 Second Street. I hope you're all familiar with it. And if you're not, please come on down, get your library card if you don't already have it. I'm just here to give you an update of what's going on at the library right now. Lots of good things. So let me see, we just wrapped up our summer reading program. A couple hundred kids from here in Fillmore signed up. And we did award one lucky family a four-pack to Disneyland. Their kids read 1,000 minutes. A number of kids read 1,000 minutes, and they were in the drawing for the tickets. We also had an adult summer reading program, and we had some very happy readers there as well. We have ongoing children's Storytime every Wednesday morning. And that's followed with Playtime. We typically have, oh, say 15 to 35 kids attending that. That's ongoing. Please spread the word. That's always a really nice time for the little ones. We have a Pirate Day this Saturday at the Fillmore Library. But every Saturday, we also have Legos. Let me see, we have Classic Movie Fridays once a month. We do have a One County One Book going on throughout the county, where the county, the city library is part of the Ventura County Library system. The One County One Library, One County One Book this year is Rough Sleepers by Tracy Kidder. And then at Cal State Channel Islands, there will be an event in October that'll be celebrating the book. Upcoming, we have, oh, we're planning hopefully a Harvest Festival in November. That'll take place on the lawn alongside the library. That'll be a big event. Anyway, just to let you know, lots of good things going on at the library. Don't forget about the library. We have study rooms. We have, oh, the high schoolers are there every day, from 3:30 to 4:30, especially when they get out and they are studying. I think this city has the best high schoolers I've seen out of the county. I've been with the library system for over 20 years and worked at most of the libraries in our county. I am most impressed by the high schoolers I see coming into the library, who just come in and study. And they work as groups. Anyway, they're awesome. I'm just so impressed. I'm impressed by all the, everybody that comes in. This is a very nice community to work in. And like I said, if you don't already have your library card, please come in, and we'll get you all set up, okay? And I invite all the council members to come in and join in for reading during Storytime, or to come on back if you enjoyed it the first time, okay?
Thank you.
So I'm Yvonne. Come in and visit. All righty?
Thank you.
You forgot one thing.
Thank you.
What about the extended hours?
Oh, extended hours, yes. We have express hours. Come in and upgrade your library card if you don't, haven't already done that, and come in for quiet time. All righty? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. It was a nice commercial break there. So next, we have Cynthia King. And Cynthia King will be speaking. She'll have a full six minutes, including Lynn Edmonds' minutes.
Thank you. I know, I'm short. Good evening, councilmembers, and thank you for your service to our community. My name is Cynthia King. I'm a Fillmore resident, a mother, a grandmother, and a retired teacher. If my two children were younger, or my three grandchildren lived closer, they would be attending Fillmore Unified School District. I have a great interest in the education of our children, and I am keenly aware of and have experienced many of the challenges of both parents and teachers, educators, in the whole education process. For that reason, I am here to speak regarding the issues and concerns around the proposed resolution opposing California state law AB 1955. As a parent and grandparent, I have experienced many of the challenges that arise as children are growing and learning about themselves and the world around them. As a teacher, I have experienced having students come to me to talk about difficult issues in their lives, including gender identity, that they did not feel free or safe to talk about with anyone else, sometimes including their parents. I am aware that other speakers have spoken passionately about the quote "sacred relationship between parents and children", and I too have cherished my relationship with the children in our family. However, I have also observed that there have been times in their lives that they needed to get together, get other inputs and perspectives from adults they trusted, who perhaps had wider experience than did we, their parents or grandparents. I realize that there are times when parents need to know if their child is being threatened, or in danger, or needing some specific kind of support. However, as a mandated reporter of child abuse when I was a teacher, I also know that there are times when parental controls cross the line into abuse of the child's safety and sense of self. In that capacity, I have personally heard from students who were being emotionally or physically abused by well-meaning parents who stood in judgment of their child's emerging sense of self and gender identity. Particularly, the teenage years are fraught with angst. For young people in both, in trying to both fit in and avoid bullying while also getting to know themselves. I have known young people who, when they came out to their parents, have been reviled, abused, and some who have even been totally disowned by their families for trying to be who they felt themselves to be. For these reasons, I am strongly opposed to the efforts by some in this community and on this council to follow up on the hateful English-only ordinance with yet another ordinance that would punish both children and educators with a requirement that would take away the freedom of self-expression. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Marie Alvez, followed by Rhonda Taylor.
Good evening. There's not a whole lot I can do about the passing of AB 1955. Not a whole lot I can do about Fillmore Unified being mandated to follow this law. But I can get up here and speak as a parent and as a school counselor for 24 years out on the avenue in Ventura. And I can say right now to parents everywhere that it's time to get even more involved and be more aware of what, of the influences that are happening in your child's life. I can say to parents that via TV, social media platforms, and technology, our kids are being influenced. When we see something that is not good for our children, our family, we have to speak up, even if we're afraid. We have to speak up. And with that, I'm going to say that AB 1955 is not a good law for anyone, and not especially for families. This law keeps parents, gay or straight, regardless of worldview or religious affiliation, in the dark regarding their child's mental health and well-being. In a few words, this law prevents anyone affiliated with schools from telling their parents that their child wants to change their name, pronoun, or sexual identity. This is for preschool through high school. Preschool through high school. And if some might say that, "Oh, that's not going to affect a five-year-old or a seven-year-old," yes, it is. It's already in the animated movies. It's everywhere. And at a much more rapid pace, it's influencing them. This resolution will probably not change the law. But maybe it will remind parents, that's the main thing for me. Maybe it will remind parents that it's so important for us to be aware of what our children are seeing and hearing. So thank you, council, for considering this city resolution. I have here around 200 signatures from parents around town who want to support this resolution. All we did was we asked the parents, "Would you be in favor of a resolution by the city that states to parents, 'This is a family-first community.'" Because there's a law out here now covering California that says we are not. Out of the 200 people, I think two or three people said no. They wouldn't sign. And that's, you know, everybody's different. They got their reasons. But these 200, they want you to know that you're being supported. Two or three weeks ago, maybe it was just two weeks ago, we were in here, I was in here for, and was listening to an organization that looks at the data of a town, and then gives us a picture of who we are. At least, I don't remember a whole lot of what he said, but what I do remember is that at least two or three times, he said, "This is a very family-friendly town, and let's keep it that way." Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. So we have Rhonda Taylor, followed by David Estraya. Am I saying that correctly?
Good evening, council. My name is Rhonda Taylor. I live here in Fillmore. I'm a retired educator. Last month, Governor Newsom signed into law Assembly Bill 1955, which prevents educators from informing parents of their child's decision to use a gender identity or gender expression or pronouns that are different than what is on their school record. In essence, it inserts educators as barriers between parents and children, undermining a parent's ability to communicate with their minor children, especially about critical, long-term, life-altering issues. Parents are the primary educators of their children and shoulder the ultimate responsibility in the education of their children. A parent's rights over their children and their education is fundamental to a healthy family, and thus a healthy community. Staff members working in our schools are secondary to parents. In fact, they work for all tax-paying parents and therefore answer to the parents. AB 1955 is an affront to parental rights and a violation of parental constitutional rights. No one working in education should stand in the way of informing parents of their child's gender identity or gender expression. Parents should never be kept in the dark regarding the lives of their children. An educator acting as a communication barrier between a child and parent about a highly private and personal issue such as gender is not an act of education, but a brazen act of sabotage toward parents. It is also a deprivation to those children in need of obtaining help, support, formation, love, and care the child should be getting from home. AB 1955 is not education, and therefore has no preemptive statewide authority. Tonight, in the interest of protecting the parents and children of Fillmore, I'm asking former city council to propose and draft an ordinance declaring Fillmore as a parent's right to no city. Please vote to add this to the agenda for discussion and consideration at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Estraya, followed by Marisal Ramirez.
I want to address the bill AB 1955 and pressing issues within our education system in Fillmore. That speaks to the heart of the community and the collective well-being of our children and our educators. Fillmore Unified School District is facing serious challenges that directly affect our students and teachers every day. Underfunding, understaffing, and inadequate resources are not just numbers on a budget sheet. They are obstacles that our children and educators confront constantly. Our schools are the foundation of our community, yet they struggle to meet even the most basic needs. We are in a moment where we must choose to invest in our public education system, not as an afterthought, but as a priority. Our teachers are overworked and underpaid. Our facilities need maintenance. And our students deserve better than bare minimum. This is about valuing people and ensuring that everyone, regardless of their background, has a fair shot at a quality education. While cultural discussions, such as those around LGBTQI issues, are important, the debate should also be about how we, as a community, can come together to ensure that all our children receive the support and education they deserve. The real issue at hand is also the inequitable distribution of resources that continues to shortchange our public schools and, by extension, our future. Moreover, confidentiality for students and Moreover, confidentiality for students and teachers is a matter of dignity and respect. It’s about protecting the most vulnerable among us, our children, and ensuring that they feel safe and supported in their learning environments. We must defend their right to privacy as a fundamental part of their education, not a privilege. Education is a public good, and it is our collective responsibility to protect it. We cannot afford to let these divides distract us from the systemic changes that are urgently needed. We must demand better funding, equitable resource allocation, and commit to valuing every student and teacher. By standing together, we can create a system that serves us all. Thanks.
Thank you. So now we have Marisol Ramirez, followed by Edgar Alves.
Hello, my name is Marisol Ramirez. I’m a lifelong Fillmore resident. As a community member, as an educator, as someone with younger relatives here in Fillmore, and as someone who was very recently a young queer child, I want nothing more than to protect our children and our youth by creating a safe environment for all of our children and youth. I hold the belief that creating a community that creates that safe environment for our youth means respecting their decision-making abilities and recognizing their ability to know what is right for themselves. This bill is not about keeping parents in the dark, it is not about lying to parents, it is not about dividing families or creating barriers between parents and their children. It is the first step in building a culture and a community that supports the relationship between families and can make them stronger. I’d like to do a quick outline on what is in AB 1955. There are two parts to the bill. The one that we’ve been hearing a lot about is the part of the bill that prohibits a policy that requires school employees to disclose any information related to a student’s sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression to any other person without the student’s consent. So this means that all of that information can be disclosed if the student gives consent. Any child who is comfortable with their family will give consent, so it’s not preventing any sort of information from getting to the parents entirely. The second part of the bill requires schools to develop and/or update resources for not only queer students, but for their families as well. Some of the reasoning behind this bill, that is in the bill, is choosing when to come out and to whom is a deeply personal decision that every queer young individual has the right to make for themselves. This bill strengthens existing protections, ensuring all students are safe, supported, and not isolated due to any part of their identity, as well as supports families to have personal conversations and work towards family acceptance on their own terms. There are many statistics that show that students will refuse external support, so if they are facing any sort of harassment or mental health struggles, they will not seek support for, out of fear, that they will be outed to their parents. I’d also really like to add really quickly, as someone who grew up and was queer before any of the influence that we see, any so-called influence that’s on social media, none of that was influenced on me. I felt what was most strongly influenced, what strongly influenced me to suppress any part of myself was external pressure from the people around me to conform into heterosexual, cisgender norms. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Edgar Alves, followed by Andrea Enriquez.
Good evening. My name is Edgar Alves, a longtime resident of Fillmore. A vote against this resolution is a vote against every single community member that has a child. A vote for this resolution gives every single parent and community member a voice. The nuclear family is the greatest form of governance known to mankind. It’s where things happen. It’s not the school that’s raising the kids. Do we really want this AB 1955, which creates an atmosphere that it’s okay for your parents not to know what’s going on with you? And when kids know this, it seems that it fosters that atmosphere of, “Well, you know, if I do this and my parents don’t know, it’s okay, I can go to my teacher, I go to the counselor,” which is wrong. The parents should be really involved 100% of the time, not because it’s convenient for the kid. The kid is changing on a daily basis, they’re growing, they’re developing, and the parent has to be involved all the time. All this resolution is doing, if you vote for it, is that it encourages parents to get involved in their children’s lives. And AB 1955, it kind of says that, points out to the point that, do you really want to be taken out of the equation in raising your children? Which is, this is what’s happening with AB 1955. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Andrea Enriquez, followed by Luann Barajas.
Good evening. My name’s Andrea Enriquez. This AB 1955 law has put into effect the following. It keeps critical information from parents regarding the mental and physical health and welfare of their child. It inserts educators as barriers between parent and their child. It also undermines parents’ ability to communicate with their children, especially about critical life-altering issues. In other words, AB 1955 allows all schools, even elementary, to hide from parents the transitioning of their child. For instance, Levine is a mother of a student at Great Saltbait Community School in Maine. She has sued the school board for helping her 13-year-old child begin socially transitioning from female to male without her knowledge, which is in violation of the law. Levine states that the school counselor gave her 13-year-old chest binders, which are garments used to compress a person’s chest and make it appear flatter. The mother also claims the school counselor allowed her child to use a male name, male pronouns, and told the child not to tell her mother. One thing, also, so this school broke the Fourteenth Amendment, where the U.S. Supreme Court has established, and established a precedent that the amendment protects parents’ rights to control and direct the education and general upbringing of their own child. So again, we’re talking about children. I have a psychology background, and I wanted to share something based on the child development and their brain. There’s also this article. There’s a doctor, Dr. Angeline is a chief medical officer for the Missouri Department of Mental Health. She says that while it may seem like an 18, or 20, or 22-year-old is able to make adult decisions, they’re not developmentally ready just yet. This is because the brain’s frontal lobe, especially the prefrontal cortex, isn’t fully mature until the age 25. So the frontal lobe is for decision-making and logic. Our children do not have the power to make life-altering choices for themselves. So I would like to ask the city council to create a Parents’ Right to Know City Ordinance against AB 1955, where educators who work in the city’s libraries, parks, or facilities will not be allowed to withhold information from parents related to a child’s sexual orientation, gender ideology, or gender expression. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Garnica, followed by, oh, I apologize, did we miss Luanna Barajas? I’m sorry. Then followed by John Garnica. Thank you.
I would like to start, that I have a trigger warning, mention of suicide within my speech. Good evening, my name is Luanna Barajas, and I’m here to share my complete disappointment that this council would consider opposing AB 1955. If an LGBTQI person does not trust you, you may not be aware of these statistics. LGBTQ youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide than their peers. Only one-third of LGBTQ youth experience parental acceptance, with an additional one-third experiencing parental rejection. LGBTQ youth who face parental rejection are eight times more likely to attempt suicide. Only 38% of LGBTQ youth report that their home is an affirming space, and over half saying that school is. LGBTQ youth who had at least one supportive adult are less likely to attempt suicide than those who do not. Before I shared the stats, I didn’t say if you don’t know any LGBTQ youth, I said if one does not trust you. If you have no LGBTQ people in your life, it’s not that they’re not there, it’s that you are not safe. I lost my best friend to suicide last year. They grew up in a home that was not safe, that was not affirming. They spent much of their life scared to show who they really were, and it started with their parents. Even after their death, their family refused to respect their wishes when using their pronouns and name. And I would like to add that they were 18 years old when they were drafted into the military and sent to Afghanistan. So they felt that their brain was sufficient enough for that. My friend used to tell me, “Maybe if I had had a teacher like you, an adult that was safe, things would have been different for me.” If a parent has not created a loving, inclusive home for their child, and their child has to undergo the pain of finding acceptance somewhere else, the last thing they need is people’s ignorance stopping them from doing so. I have three children in the Fillmore District, one is in middle school. If I have created an environment where my child does not trust me, it is not the law or teacher’s fault, it is mine.
Thank you. Okay, John Garnica, followed by Annette Sula.
Good evening, city council. My name is John Garnica, and I live at 819 Wood Grove Road, and I’ve been a resident of Fillmore for most of my life, except for the first nine years. How unfortunate that a majority of council members has decided to put forth a resolution that has nothing to do with Fillmore city business. We all choose what we want to spend our limited time on, whether it’s work, relaxation, or recreation. We choose the things that matter most, and by extension, what isn’t important enough to warrant our time. How sad that the city council has decided to spend its time on something that does not benefit the city, over which it has no authority, and which has nothing but a dog whistle to those who seek to divide our community. The east end of Santa Clara Street is in dire need of repaving. Same with the east end of Third Street, and numerous streets in North Fillmore. Community members are complaining that Three Rivers Park has a pretty bad drainage problem that makes it difficult for our kids to play in. Many cars pay no attention to the speed limit on the upper part of Central Avenue, and this is a safety issue for the families living near there. I would like to urge the council to stop putting city business second and actually fix city problems. And I would like to point out as well that, you know, if you actually read the resolution, which it sounds like to me only one person so far actually read, not the resolution, excuse me, the law as it’s been passed, if you actually read the law, it’s really covering the employees of school districts. So please explain to me how the law that covers school district employees and how they interact with the students, how that is city business? Because it’s not. And I was on the school board for 16 years. The school board has purview over district employees, not the city council. So please, stay in your lane, fix the problems that we have in Fillmore, and quit wasting people’s time and money. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Annette Sula, followed by Mary Bennett.
Hello, I’m Annette Sula. I’ve been a member of this community since 19, well, 35 years now. I live here in Fillmore. This is my home, this is my community, and I am appalled that the governor has chosen to write a law which takes away the parents’ rights to know what’s going on with their children in school, for any reason. If there is a problem in a school where a child comes and talks about things that are going on in their home that are detrimental to the child, there is a way of dealing with that, but it is not by excluding the parents. We are a community that really, one of the things, when I moved here from Ventura 35 years ago, I used to go to the Little League games where my son was playing, and there would be maybe three parents in the whole stadium. When I moved to Fillmore, the stadiums were filled. The parents were all here, supporting their children. The parents in this community want to be involved in their children’s lives, and they don’t need somebody like the governor to say that they can’t be involved in everything that’s going on with their children’s rights. It’s just wrong. How could I possibly feel safe sending my child to a school that says they’re not going to tell me if my child is going through something? I’m a man, I was a family counselor, I was a mandated reporter. If a child came into my office and said these kinds of things, I would have to report that, and I certainly would have to tell the parents that this child is struggling. I don’t know why this law says that the teachers are better off dealing with children than their parents are, because that’s what it’s saying. And this is wrong. It took us like a couple of days to get over 200 signatures. If we had a few more days, we could get 1,000. The people of Fillmore don’t want this. The minute I said it to somebody, they’re like, “Let me sign. Wait, let me...” Okay, so, this is Fillmore City Council. I think that it is a very bold and courageous thing that you may be planning to do, and I hope that you do it. I hope you do it to maintain the integrity of who we are here in Fillmore. I don’t know who a lot of these people are, maybe they live here, maybe they don’t, but they didn’t identify as people that actually live here. So, I don’t know that, but I live here, and I’ve lived here for a long time. And I moved here when my son went into junior high. And I moved here because I didn’t feel the schools in Ventura were safe for him, but I knew he’d be safe here, and he was, and he graduated from Fillmore High. But never...
Annette, I’m sorry, your time is expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, city council, and city manager. I’m Mary Bennett, I live here in Fillmore. I am definitely in favor of a city council resolution to declare Fillmore a parents’ right-to-know city. AB 1955 is a bad law, to put it mildly. A student with a headache cannot be given a Tylenol at school without their parents' consent. Yet this law gives teachers the right to hide important information from parents that they have the right to know. The parents are the parents of the child. They raise the child until they’re of age. The government wants to cram their liberal agenda down people’s throats. This law is unbelievable and is totally unacceptable. I encourage all concerned parents here in Fillmore and elsewhere in California to take their children out of public schools. You can put them in private schools or homeschool them, there are accredited homeschool programs to help you. You can ask grandparents to help with either tuition at a private school or to help with homeschooling. The public schools lose funds when they lose students. Actions speak. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Diane Sutton, followed by Moira Kristin.
Hello, city council.
Hello, City Council. My name is Diane Sutton. I was going to address AB nineteen fifty-five, it was a good year. But I'm going to address, actually, Mr. Garnica's comment about staying in the lane of the city and the school. Very briefly, the school and the city have a synergistic relationship. The school often asks permission from the city for specific functions, and vice versa. I can't think of one right now where the city asks school permissions, but without the cooperation from both sides, there would be a standoff in sports, festivals, police and fire departments. The lanes of the two merge often, in my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, am I pronouncing it right?
Maria.
Maria? Okay, that is, okay, thank you. Followed by Jasmine Vasquez.
I'm Maria Creston. I've lived here a long time too, and I homeschooled six children here. And my, one of my sons just moved back, and he has a child, a baby, and is expecting another one. And, yes, we do like Fillmore being a family-friendly place. And I hear from the people who are on the other side of this issue that they are concerned for the safety of children, and for a safe place for children. Well, I also see overhead, it says, "In God we trust." God invented a safe place for children, it's called a family. It works most of the time. Sometimes it doesn't work, and things have, you know, we work around it, but we don't make laws declaring parents the enemy, and saying that there has to be, the state has to come in and save all students from their parents, which is what this nineteen fifty-five law seems to say. I would also like to say that, yes, it would be nice for the City Council to take care of bumpy streets, and not enough lights in the parks, and that sort of thing. But I also think that your primary concern is with the safety of children and families. And it's not out of your lane to think about that.
Jasmine Vasquez, followed by Brandy Hollis, who is our last speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Jasmine Vasquez, and I'm going to make this clear. I am a resident for the last twenty-nine years. I know that some people may have missed that from the previous people talking. But, you know, I'm here today to voice my strong support for AB nineteen fifty-five, also known as the Safety Act. This bill is a crucial step towards protecting the LGBTQ plus students from the potential harm of forced outing. As someone who has seen this community grow and change, I understand the importance of keeping our schools safe for all children. Forcing a student to reveal their gender identity or sexual orientation to their family can have devastating consequences, especially when that home environment may not be supportive. These students deserve a safe space to explore who they are without the fear of rejection or abuse. Outing a student can lead to trauma, homelessness, or even self-harm. AB nineteen fifty-five ensures that schools remain places where students can focus on learning, and not fear. It respects a student's right to privacy while still allowing parents to be involved when their child feels safe and ready to share that part of themselves. I urge the City Council to support this important measure, and help protect the most vulnerable in our community. Also, while I still have my time, I just want to say that I encourage parents who are stating that, you know, well, why don't I know, like, I want to know what's going on with my kid, I would encourage them to harbor a safe environment in their homes, to say, hey, you know, be able to talk to me about whatever is going on with you, whether it's your, you know, your gender identity, your sexuality. Be comfortable enough that you can speak that with me, because that's where this is all coming from. We want to make these kids feel safe. There are homes where unfortunately there's a lot of abuse, even physically abuse. And sometimes, for the safety of them, we have to keep that confidential, because they can endure either physical abuse, mental abuse at home, because they want to come out. Saying things against this, and what I've been hearing, is the reason why the queer people in our, in our community, they're here, and a lot of them are closeted because of what they hear and all these kind of things. So, that, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Brandy Hollis, please.
All right, good evening. Thank you, Brandy Hollis. First of all, I'd like to say thank you so much for starting the process of fixing our parks. It means a lot to our community, as you've heard tonight, and I'm really excited to see the improvements, and your efforts are greatly appreciated, I know from both soccer and football as I was walking last night. I'd like to say that hiding information from parents can undermine trust, and create a sense of insecurity about the school system. When parents aren't fully informed, they may feel less confident in the educational environment, and less involved in their children's learning. This lack of transparency can lead to the following: an erosion of trust. Parents may feel excluded or suspicious, which can damage the relationship between the school and families. Two, it's going to reduce the engagement. Without clear information, parents might be less likely to participate in school activities or support educational initiatives, which we are already seeing. There's a negative impact on student outcomes. Informed parents are better equipped to support their children's education, and a lack of communication can hinder their ability to do so effectively. And this is where it becomes your business, S.A. Council. It causes a community strain. Distrust and dissatisfaction among parents can ripple through the community, potentially leading to decreased support for schools and related programs. And lastly, there's an economic consequence. Our schools are related to our economy, it is a business. Okay? If parents lose confidence in the school system, it may affect local property values and investment in the community impacting the local economy. Transparent communication helps build a stronger, more supportive school environment, which benefits students, families, and the broader community, not just parents and students. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Okay, so that concludes our public comments session. Appreciate everyone here that spoke up, regardless of which side you're on, we appreciate community input, and I love seeing, as, you know, time goes on, we're seeing more and more people participating in our, in our community, in attending City Council meetings, so that's a great thing. Moving on now to item number six, City Council Reports, Recommendations, and Comments, and I will turn it over to our council. We'll just take just a moment, anybody who wants to leave now, please feel free to, although you're going to miss the best part with these public comments, so, by the council. Thank you, Mary. Okay. Just wait another moment or so. All right, council members, anyone have anything they'd like to share here at item number six, City Council Reports, Recommendations, and Comments?
Yeah, I'd like to first thank everyone for coming out tonight. For those that have already left, thank you for coming, in case you hear the comments later. I do think that one thing that's really important is to recognize that people are getting up to speak about an item that isn't on our agenda, which is encouraged. That's what the public comments section is, of our agenda is for, and it's definitely worthwhile. There's a lot of good ideas that we've heard during public comments before, and some of those have turned into city actions. So, thank you, everyone from the community, for coming out to voice whatever concerns you may have. One other item that I wanted to bring up tonight, and hopefully see if we can take action on, is some of our transportation and traffic safety policies are maybe a little bit piecemeal because of just the size of our town. We have a large thoroughfare that goes right through the middle of town, Highway one-twenty-six, and after some discussion with city staff and questions about, you know, how we can improve things, it seems like that we could explore the development of a long-range transportation plan in order to better set the vision for what the city needs are, especially when it comes to large outside parties like Caltrans, and maybe even developers that come into town. So I'd like to propose that the city direct, or the council direct staff to explore like a schedule to research the requirements more, and then look and do potential funding to develop a long-range transportation plan to better address the city needs.
I'd be in favor of moving that forward.
I would too.
I have a question. Is this a, is this something to be part of our general plan? Is this like you're asking for a transportation, like, was it Transportation Action Plan? Or, I think there's, there's something included in the general plan that has an option to be like a larger transportation plan, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I don't know if it would fit directly into even like the circulation element, but it's kind of a more of a, I believe, a standalone document. Roxanne, I don't know if you could comment, maybe just on the idea, obviously, we don't have that document right now, but maybe to give an idea of what that looks like.
It's a standalone document, it's not within the general.
Right, yeah.
Okay, is it something that other cities have done, like people adopt, people, cities adopt transportation plans? Okay.
And I'm just suggesting that we direct staff to explore that, and to research funding options to actually develop it.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So some of those kind of happen in the future.
So come back with some recommendations on.
Okay, yeah. I needed that extra information to understand.
Yeah, no problem. Took me a long time to get there as well, I've been back and forth trying to understand.
Well.
Okay. Other council members? Anything else?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Let's see here. I did want to make an announcement, that on September twenty-ninth, the Santa Clara Valley Wellness Foundation is having a Harvest and Health Pumpkin Festival. It's going to be in Santa Paula, actually, at the Ag Museum. And the Santa Clara Valley Wellness Foundation has been around here in our valley for quite a while. They are known to provide scholarships for those students in the high school who are interested in the medical field, internships at Santa Paula Hospital, those who are interested in going into nursing, I think even to be doctors. It's a nice, they do more, but that's sort of what I know, have known them for, and so this is just going to be a great event. Again, it's September twenty-ninth, I believe it's a Sunday, from twelve to four at the Ag Museum Harvest and Health Pumpkin Festival. There'll be crafts, raffles, vendors, music, and more. And so we'll try to put that on, I think, the community page, trying to get more information out about our events, of course, here in Fillmore, but also there's just some great events happening in the Santa Clara Valley. So, just wanted to share that. And I too wanted to thank everyone who came out tonight, like, a lot of our crowd left. But thank you, as always, for your time and sharing your thoughts with the City Council. Your time is valuable, your feelings and concerns on matters relevant to our community are beyond valuable, and our democratic system here in local government, where we hear from our residents and members of the community in a space that is respectful, is oh so valuable. So, thank you, thank you all very much. And I believe I'll save my comments for, on this matter, when it is on the agenda. Thank you.
There's, Mark? You? With regard to the resolution that we heard from so many people about this evening, that was something that was suggested at our last council meeting, and it will be brought forward at another agenda along with a discussion. And along those lines, I don't think we touched on this, and I, we did not hear from anybody in the audience about this one issue, which really is frustrating for me. And that is, once again, seeing Sacramento taking over local control. So, and my point is, is that we, as a community, we vote for our board members, our Fillmore School Board members. We know who they are, we vote for them for a reason. And so, the school board, you know, has a, certainly a say in all of this, I mean, they don't have a say in it at this point, and that's, that's the problem. Is that Sacramento then dictates what we can do here in our own municipality, and that holds true with so many different other areas. And that's the most frustrating aspect of being on council for me, is fighting Sacramento on taking over from, whether it be housing development, or low-income housing especially, anything you can think of, and right down to this, again, they are usurping the responsibility that our school board has. They should be calling the shots on this, not Sacramento. So I want to, I would like to include that discussion when it comes back on the agenda, and if it's going to be a resolution incorporated somehow into the resolution if possible. And we can just, I guess, talk about it at the next meeting if it comes up. All right, anybody else? Okay, then, moving on.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I do have another comment. I'm, I'm, sorry, back on, back on this issue, I did want to say one more thing that I want everyone to understand, and that is that, I know it's not on the, it's not on the agenda right now, but that what the mayor said is true, but that there's not a local impact. So, whether that, that makes you very, you know, angry, frustrated, or, on the other hand, may make you feel very happy or relieved, it's, it's, there's not a tangible, just really wanted people to understand, there's not a tangible effort of change, tangible change that will happen in the community. I just wanted to put that in. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, consent calendar passes, is approved. On to item number eight, our only actual new business agenda item. This is the Ward of a Contract for Construction of Project specification, sidewalks and plaza concrete, and I will let our city staff take over from here.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. I guess I get to be the Roxanne Show, the only item. I didn't realize that for a little bit there, okay. So, it's, at least it's fun stuff, we get to build things, hopefully. This is a revisit to the Mountain View project that we combined with the City Hall Plaza project to try and get bids on the City Hall Plaza, and to tweak a couple things in the Mountain View project to get a better price. We did as directed, and we rebid it. I'm going to go walk down memory lane, because it's been a little bit, and remind you what we're building. So, on the Mountain View sidewalk project, we bid that as bid Schedule A, and we put the plans in. We're building new sidewalk from Ventura Street to Santa Clara Street, as shown here. Here's a picture of the project site near the highway. In the background, there's the highway. I wanted to point out that when we talked about this, at the adoption of plans and original approval to bid the project, it was brought up that that guard rail on top of the existing retaining wall in the corner is really ugly, and asked if that could be replaced. And so we did incorporate that into the bids, and I'll talk about that later, but it's in this picture, I wanted to point it out. This is, if you turn and you head up Mountain View Street, this is the other driveways that we'll be removing and replacing to put in the sidewalk. And in between this driveway and this driveway, we'll close this driveway with a retaining wall, and then combine these two driveways into a new driveway. This is the plan for it, basically, this is the driveway we're closing, this is the retaining wall we're building, these are the driveways that we're replacing. At this end of Mountain View Street, the highway is over there to the right, and right there on the corner, we included in the bid to replace that ugly fencing with steel galvanized, black painted, that's similar to what's across the street. And so, that will be a lovely improvement, and I'm glad you asked us to include that. This is the other end of the site, at the Santa Clara Street intersection. Again, some of the scope of work, this is the plans for it, this is the driveway that we have to rebuild down at this end, where we have to move the gate that's in the right way out of the way, and that's all included in the bid, and we've been working with the property owner. So that's kind of a quick review of what we're building on the Mountain View sidewalks. In the restoration project, we updated the scope of work a little bit after we last spoke about it. On- about it, including where the yellow circle is. I animated that, didn't I? No, I didn't. The area by the back door, which I had not, I went out there that night and said, oh my gosh! Like, I walked right through this. Yeah, for so many years, exactly. So that, you know, repairing that sidewalk that's right outside our back door is included in the project now. Redoing all the joint filler and all the sidewalk gaps, doing a lot of the brick paver, repairing all the broken brick pavers, doing a lot more sidewalk replacement due to unevenness for ADA compliance, some tree grate replacements, some handrail. There's various handrails that the way they were put in are no longer compliant with current ADA, and so there's extensions or trimmings or moving them to create the clearance. So that's generally the scope of work. So, the project costs. This is where the rubber meets the road, right? We did the bid, we got bids, we got a lot of bids, actually. And of all of them, so there were six bids, it's in your staff report, ADA General Engineering is the low bidder, again, which was the low bidder before on the sidewalk project, actually, and now he's the low bidder on both projects. Full disclosure, because it's Schedule A and Schedule B in one, you add them together to get the lower bidder. ADA is definitely the lowest bidder on the Mountain View project. They're like $6,800 higher than the next low bidder. If you separate them and just look at the City Hall project, they would have been the second low bidder. If you took Schedule A and Schedule B individually, that's not that bad, $6,800, but just full disclosure, wanted you to know that. But here's the big breakdown. So on the Mountain View project, oh, I lost my notes. On the Mountain View project, we had it as bid Schedule A, and bid Schedule A we had as the base bid, and then an alternative additive line item for Schedule A in case we didn't want to build, because of cost, to see how the costs would go. The base bid included building the sidewalk, the retaining wall, the driveways, the pavement repair, everything needed to get the sidewalk in. And that came up to, the bid is $306,750.60. Then we added as an add-all to remove that ugly rail and put in a nice, pretty fence. That's $24,000 to do that line item. And then there's, we had in the plans irrigation to hot-tap and connect and put irrigation lines in, but we're not building landscaping right now with this project, because you can't spend SB 1 on the landscaping. But if we want to put future landscaping, it gets the pipe work done. That is another $38,000 for just landscaping. So you can see why I separated those out, in case we didn't want to spend the money if it was over budget. But since all of it came in at 369, and we have, you know, cumulatively 575, so even with the construction and design and engineering costs, it's a good bid price, and we can afford to do all of that and get the future irrigation put in. And so we're recommending we bid it all, it's fully funded, I think we should just do it all. But we do, I wanted you to know that the irrigation line items and the replace that ugly guard rail items are separate, and we wouldn't have to award them if you didn't want to, okay? And then on bid Schedule B for the City Hall, we did all of that work on one bid schedule, because it's, in the end, it's not a big scope of work, which is, again, why we kind of combined it Schedule A and Schedule B to get someone to bid on it. The, that one came in over budget, as you can see. We're like, you know, what was the number? I got it in the staff report, that we'd need like $65,000 of general fund money to augment the ARPA funding, because we just randomly threw 150,000 of ARPA funding a couple of years ago when we started talking about this. $75,000 of the construction cost is all the sidewalk work. There's over 1,000 square feet of sidewalk repairs, most of them, well, all of them are ADA-related. $21,000 just for the brickwork, another 19.5,000 for joint sealing, which is very much needed. And then 21,000 in tree grates, and, you know, add all that up, plus a few of the other things, and you get to the, the construction contract came in at 167, so just the construction alone without the design and the construction management and all that stuff. And we're at 232,694 for the whole project on 150,000 project budget, which is not where I want to be standing before you tonight. So I think, for me, these prices that we got are competitive. The plaza maintenance has been deferred for many years. We're doing a lot of catch-up all at once. If we were to try and reduce the scope and rebid it, I think we'd get higher unit prices, again, or nobody bidding, because it's a small project, if we separate it from the other big project. In the end, the engineering fees could be a lot less than I'm showing here. This is worst-case scenario. If they end up building them, like, they're each a 30-day project schedule, and I've had to budget the inspection and construction management 30 days and 30 days linear, because they can build it that way, but if they overlap at all, we'll spend a lot less on inspection, because we'll double duty on the jobs, right? So this is what's budgeted. I don't expect us to exceed these budgets, and I expect to return to the general fund a portion of that additional money that we're asking for. A lot of it is in the construction and inspection costs, and those are, it's $20,000 a month to inspect a job, and if they've got 30 working days, that's, you know, it adds up fast. So my recommendation to staff is that we award all of it, get the work done, it's much needed. We will do our best to save money along the way and come in underneath these figures.
Thank you, Roxanne.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Does council have any questions for staff?
I have just a general question. Typically, when we get these bids, how long will they hold the bid for us? I meant now, I meant before, they were like 60, 80 days. Now, what are they holding them for us now with inflation and all that kind of stuff? I meant how, typically?
I think in the notice-inviting bids, we still require they hold them for 60 days, and we've found that the contractors are still pretty flexible. Like, if you say, we want to delay this, can we bid it in a couple of months? Like, a lot of times, especially because these are local contractors, they'll work with us usually. It hasn't been that impacted, but legally, they have to honor them for 60 days. Oftentimes, they'll honor them for longer at our request.
So it's gotten better since COVID has passed?
Yeah. It has.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Questions?
No, I just wanted to comment that I think it's much needed, it's long overdue, and if we wait any longer, it's just going to cost us more money later on down the road, so.
That's how I feel.
Right.
Yeah, I was, I don't want to say hesitant, but there's obviously a lot of competing priorities for upkeep with aging infrastructure, but it, I think what probably convinced me that this being a higher priority was seeing how successful some of the community events over the summer were out in front of the City Hall here. It's, it's great to see, and I think probably that my perspective on there was a little bit skewed, because we haven't had something as big as maybe the May Festival in a long time. But it's, it's good to see people realizing that, you know, the space is still there for them to be able to use and enjoy. And so I do think it's, it's good and necessary, and thank you for convincing me of that.
Great. Thank you. Kristina, anything from you?
Nope, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
All right. I recommend that our council approve the award of a contract with ADA General Engineering, ADAGE, for the construction of project specification number 24-02 sidewalks and plaza concrete project, and appropriate $82,694.30 of additional budget from the general fund to complete the City Hall improvements as bid.
I second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none?
Thank you.
This matter passes. Thank you very much, Roxanne. All right. So on to item number nine, committee, commission, and board reports. So back over to council members.
I have one. I attended the air pollution control board this afternoon, and I've been in contact with Ali Gassemi, who was the head of the Air Pollution Control District, and we've been talking about the Chiquita landfill. And they have been monitoring the air. They put in two temporary monitoring stations, one in Piru and the one a little bit closer to Fillmore, and so far, the reports have been coming back good. They haven't found anything of significant risk, but heading the other way, it's a much different story.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, it's a much different story.
Like schools at near Castake were concerned.
And they're not really testing for benzene either, which is kind of a concern for me. So I'll keep you updated as more tests come out.
Great. Okay, anyone else?
I'd like to just, I guess, maybe reiterate some information, I'll have it all so lean on Dave, but through its efforts to help with economic development, the city is going to be hosting a, so like a business, social media outreach kind of program, like coaching people who may not be super familiar. Would Erica or Dave be able to speak a little bit more towards that?
During his report.
Right, well, that's fine, he could do it during the report, next item, yeah.
Okay. I do have a couple of things to report back on, and that's, one, we had a Ventura County Transportation Commission meeting. We'd been dark most of the summer, so we had a very lengthy meeting one day last week. The discussion of, a lot of the discussion had to do with public transportation and preparing for the 2028 Olympics in Los Angeles. So Darren Kettle, who oversees the entire district, he used to oversee just VCTC here, but now he oversees transportation, Metrolink, Amtrak, between here and LA and elsewhere, I believe. Anyway, so the discussion was great detail about how they're going to try, it's going to be, just FYI, the Olympics, they're calling a no-car event. In other words, it sounds like they are going to prohibit people from attending some of the Olympic events via public transportation. You will not be allowed to drive your vehicle, your personal vehicle, to these events. And again, this is 2028, down the road, so, but it's going to be, I think, a monster job to get people out of their vehicles and get into public transportation. So there's a lot of discussion on that. And then also, I participated in a webinar on legislation yesterday, and it was hosted by the League of California Cities. And for those who don't know, the League of California Cities is basically a support agency for all city councils and municipalities all over the state of California. And they do a great job, they're based out of Sacramento, and they have lobbyists there that monitor all the legislations going through the legislators and getting, ending up on our governor's desk. So the way things stand right now, there were some very interesting pieces of legislation, and I'd be happy to share information with, anybody who wants to send me an email and give you more information on some of the things that really struck a chord with me. And those pieces of legislation right now are sitting on the governor's desk to be signed. What the League of California Cities does is they consult with all the municipalities and say, should we support this, or should we oppose this? So every one of the bills we went through during this legislative webinar yesterday, they shared what position the league, what position they were going to take on it, whether they wanted the governor to veto it or to sign the bill. So it's really interesting and learn a lot from it, but again, you know, reach out to me via email, and I'd be happy to provide you with more information in detail. And that's all I have. So, anyone else? Okay, let's move on to item number 10, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just a couple new items, a couple repeat items. Again, youth basketball registration closes on September 30th. The registration fee is $100 per player. We're also still taking applications for referees and gym managers, so please contact the city at 805-524-3701, extension 713. We're also taking sign-ups for the Fillmore Legends Adaptive Basketball League as well. For the business item, the Economic Development Collaborative and the City of Fillmore have arranged a social media workshop for our business owners. It's going to be held on a Wednesday, October 9th at 6:00 PM, and to accommodate a wider audience, the workshop will be conducted in a hybrid format, allowing both online and in-person participation. We will also be recording the workshop and making the content available on the city's Economic Development Resources section of the webpage. But we're also going to have staff walk up and down and hand out a flyer to the businesses located on, within Central Avenue and some of the outskirts on Highway 126 as well. Tomorrow morning, please get up bright and early. At 6:45 is the 9/11 remembrance ceremony at the fire station at 711 Landeros Lane. Beginning at 6:45 is coffee and light snacks. 6:55, we'll have the raising of the flight to have staff, and the bells will go off to commemorate the first tower that was hit during that time. On Saturday, September 28th, 8:00 AM till 1:00 in the afternoon at Well Number Four, which is on Good Enough Road between A and B Streets, residents and small businesses are able to drop off trash for free. This includes recyclables, trash, furniture, appliances, old tires, refrigerators, computers, television sets, and stereos among the material that's there. But for some people in the audience and for city council, we've actually started the elevator repair, started on September 5th. We have, all the old electrical hydraulic equipment has been removed, and the new electronics and hydraulics are now installed. The electrician will be out next week to energize the controls. Our fire and safety issues will also be installed next week. And we're waiting on the cabin tier installation, hopefully get that scaled in the next two weeks. They have one more part that's going to come in, we hope to get this done by November. So that's what we're pushing for right now, it's one item out there, but we are moving forward on getting that taken care of. And then earlier today, we were talking about the parks. We are almost finalizing, it should be done by the end of next week, the new shade structures at both the Lower State Park and Tourers Park, they had the poles up there already installed, waiting to put the canvas on top of it to get that taken care of. And then last week, myself and Joe, our new pellet works director, we talked with a vendor in terms of installing lights at Tourers Park. We cut the project way down. We removed lights for the baseball field, and are concentrating more just on the soccer field area and the football practice area, that tends to get more usage, plus they're playing, want to get started outside. So we're waiting to get those, excuse me, those costs brought in, hopefully by the end of next week, and we'll have a discussion internally with staff and come back with a recommendation to city council later on this year to see which direction we want to move forward on that. At this time, I would like to call, lolo up real quick for an item, but on top of that, in terms of another issue with the homeless, just an update on the Arrendo removal. We got some word back that the work will begin either in the first or second quarter of 2025, once they get the approval regarding that. And while I was going to talk about some door knockers in the community at this point in time, and then that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and community members. So earlier today, it was brought to the city's attention that we had a couple of solicitors going around knocking on doors, requesting to go inside the residences of our community members to test the water. Then on top of that, we received a second call from the same solicitors. Just prior to the council meeting starting, our deputies did go out and made contact with two individuals, younger individuals, who work for a company called California Efficiency Group. I don't know if you guys recall, a couple of months back, we had the same, the same company with solicitors that came out here. But anyways, we made contact with them, they're essentially just trying to sell water filtration systems. The company does have what appears to be a legitimate website, if you look it up online. We did notify them of the need for a city permit, which I don't believe they have, but I'll check with staff tomorrow. So just a reminder, and I know Erica sent out something on social media for our community members, right, the city will never ask to go inside your house and test your water, so don't let anybody inside your house unless you're comfortable with whoever they are and what they're bringing to you. Call us if you're in doubt, just call our dispatch center, we'll send deputies out there to make contact, we'll shoot them out, and eventually start issuing citations if they continue. Last time they came around, they were pretty compliant. We advised them of the need for the city permit, they left the area, and we haven't heard from them in months. I did leave at the time, if you recall, a voicemail for, you know, whatever the 1-800 number they have, and, you know, I never got a call back. So, community members, don't let people in your house unless you know them, and then call us if there's any doubt as to who they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we are now moving on to our closed session, we're going to adjourn, so we can go into closed session on one potential litigation matter. We will come back at the conclusion of that and let you know if we have anything to report out, and then adjourn the meeting after that. So again, thank you all for being here. If you aren't here, we come back.